Thank you.
All set.
Okay, we'll call the order of the city council work session for Monday, October 27, 2025. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mark Bitner.
Here.
Shannon Derby.
Here.
Bill Leclair.
Here.
Doug Brand.
Here.
Tim Petrie. Bonnie Shimilonis.
Here.
Scott Stackmesser.
Here.
Adam Wuski.
Here.
John Leclair.
Here.
Thank you. Number four consideration of any council member request to participate in this meeting from a remote location. Today, Mark is joining us from the phones. We just need a motion and a second to accept Mark in.
I'll make a motion to accept Mark on the phone.
Thank you, Doug. Second by.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Bill. Any council discussion? See now, we'll do roll call.
Shannon Derby.
Aye.
Bill Leclair.
Aye.
Doug Brand.
Aye.
Tim Petrie. Bonnie Shimilonis.
Aye.
Scott Stackmesser.
Aye.
Adam Wuski.
Aye.
John Leclair.
Aye.
Okay, thanks, Mark. You're welcome, Mark. You've joined the meeting officially now. To number five discussion items. Three different ones tonight. Discussion of community investment infrastructure and equipment demands. Discussion of a resolution reaffirming the city's commitment to financial sustainability and responsible debt management of the self-imposed debt cap. And discussion of accordance to create chapters two dash seven dot sixteen of the municipal code establishing policy responsible capital borrowing. All that is a nice little presentation, I'm assuming.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We're going to blend A, B, and C all together in a whole review of eighteen slides. Please ask questions as we go along. I think this will work much better if it's a conversation, not a formal presentation. Tonight, we're going to talk about capital investment plan. We can give you a forecast of a little bit of the future. This is not a long-term forecast. It's not a seven-day forecast. It's more of a weekend forecast. What we really need to do ultimately is develop a formal five-year CIP. Oh, listen, we need to develop a five-year CIP. This is a step in that direction. So instead of looking at one year at a time, this is our attempt to extend that forecast a little bit farther, two, three, four years down the road. We're not trying to scare anybody, but we are trying to do an accurate assessment of the state of Two Rivers and the state of the departments. Before we move on, please take a moment to read that anonymous quote. I don't know who said it, but I did find it on the internet and I thought it kind of summed it up very well. I've been here almost 100 days. I started at the beginning of August, so I've had some time to kind of assess the situation. And what follows is my honest assessment of where we are in Two Rivers and where we go from there. So to you. First slide is, or two. There's a lot here. This is the busiest slide of all. There's a lot going on here. Icon on the left, you've probably all seen before, the yellow bar is the state legal limit. Wisconsin has a very conservative cap on how much municipalities can borrow. I like that about Wisconsin. They seem to be better managed than Illinois, and that's one of the reasons why. That yellow bar, it forces us to spend smart and keep debt loads. That's great. I don't want to change that at all. In 2007, the city council adopted the blue bar, which is a more strict self-imposed debt limit, which is even more strict than the state legal limit. It is set at sixty percent of the legal limit. The state legal limit is five percent of our equalized assessed value, five percent of our EAV. The self-imposed debt cap from 2007 is more like three percent of our total EAV. That is a good, prudent, self-imposed cap. I think it's a great thing Two Rivers has. I don't want to change that at all. This council did not put that self-imposed cap in place. That was from 2007. But you've maintained it. Two Rivers is holding itself to a higher standard required by law. Fantastic. We're sitting at thirty-eight percent, and that's going to be even lower by the end of this year, by the end of 2025. So we're doing great. Two Rivers has a good strong history of being financially sound, being prudent, and being wise with taxpayers' monies. Let's not change any of that. I think in local government, almost everybody, probably 100% of people can agree that financial sustainability is a goal. One of our top three goals is financial sustainability. There's two sides of that coin. One side is being financially sound and being prudent. We're doing very good at that. The other side of that coin is flexibility. It balances fiscal responsibility with flexibility. I would like us to focus a little more on the flexibility part. Our current debt load is sitting at eighteen point seven million dollars. That's our general obligation debt. Ninety-eight percent of it will be repaid within a decade. Outstanding. I wish I could say that for my personal finances. I don't think most American households can say ninety-eight percent of their debt will be repaid within ten years. So job well done. Doing great. Keep it up. I don't want to change that at all. State max is five percent of the EAV. All right, right now, we're sitting at about one billion dollars of equalized assessed value. We hit the one billion mark for the first time in history. That's a notable achievement. So our state max fluctuates, right? So right now, it's sitting at fifteen million dollars. The self-imposed max is at thirty million dollars. So while all that's there, down at the bottom, our local tax base is relatively flat for eighteen, nineteen years. That was two decades. Now it's over a billion dollars. We see big increases lately. That's good news and bad news, right? On two sides of the same coin. So we had a big increase from 2024 to 2025, and we've all seen how that played out. It's good that values are finally rising after two decades of being flat. Of course, it results in values being higher, so property tax bills go up, so it's bad if you're homeowner. But when you're faced with either a town that's dwindling or a town that's growing in value, or you may rather have the one growing in value instead of shrinking in value over time. So it's not a bad thing, right? Values are going up, and that means our flexibility is growing. I think about it kind of like credit limit. My own personal credit limit. When I got a credit card when I was eighteen years old, my credit limit was pretty low. Now that I'm in my late thirties, my credit limit has been lifted a lot because my income has grown, and I've shown proof of, you know, being financially wise and paying my bills sometimes. We have proven ourselves to be financially conservative. Ninety-eight percent repaid within ten years, self-imposed debt cap in 2007. Fantastic. Let's keep doing all of that. Focusing on flexibility, I think, is important. So each year, the cost of infrastructure continues to go up, right? Equipment gets more expensive every year. Facility maintenance, all the projects we have to do, construction goes up every year. It's no surprise. This is natural. This is normal. This is inflationary pressure that is faced by every community. But it also means that that fixed rigid two-million-dollar level we try to stay at is buying less and less every year. It's buying less and less every year. We're falling behind a little bit every year. We're falling behind here. That's true for building maintenance. That's true for roads, pipes, sidewalks, trees, parks, the list goes on. Are there any questions at this point?
Yeah. So what do you?
Hang on, Mark. Mark, hang on. Bonnie's first. Go ahead, Bonnie.
Why do you, you keep bringing up sidewalks? Now, my understanding, because I've had to do this, I have been paying for my own sidewalks every time something goes wrong with them. What happened to that one? Did that change? Do you know anybody?
What do you think, man?
Sidewalks, to get the sidewalk repaired, replaced, two things have changed. Well, not two things. One thing has changed is all sidewalks that are impacted by terrorist street trees are being repaired at the city's cost. And as far as the private homeowners share of the cost, we have to pay the contractor upfront, and then the property owners have to pay us back. So we have to borrow that money for, have those funds available to pay the contractor, and then over a course of time, the property owners pay us back.
And that's over ten years usually, most businesses?
Sidewalks is a three-year payback.
Seven, five, seven, nine, five?
Five-year payback, yes. Unless you do it yourself, unless you do it yourself, correct?
So the city still needs to take all the money at the front end to make it happen that year? But that's just sidewalks. There's so much on the sidewalks. So, Mark? Mark, do you have a question?
Yes. Yes. Kyle, we're talking about the capital limit of two million dollars. I'm working through the budget. That capital limit is a good practice of, we don't need the flexibility. But I don't think we have in the city, there's any written ordinance that requires a successive capital limit of two million dollars. Is that correct?
That's my understanding too. There's no resolution or regulation or anything that requires us to stay at two million. It's more of unwritten practice.
Well, the last couple of years, it's been a good practical thing, but it's not cashed in so that we have to do that. It's just our responsibility to make sure we don't track quickly, right?
Correct. Correct.
Thank you.
So with our tax base finally over one billion, we now have more flexibility. Framework that allows fiscal responsibility, but is also granting you the power to be flexible for the community to fund major projects as we keep growing. So again, we've done well on the fiscal responsibility side. Now it might be time to thoughtfully embrace the flexibility side. We have a strong debt profile. This, this slide is a fork in the road, and this is what we want your direction on by the end of tonight. We'll come back to this slide right at the end. There's no right or wrong answer to this. It is, it's about values and perspectives and your vision and what kind of community do you want to govern over? You are the government of eleven thousand two hundred people. And we can stay at the status quo. We can stay at around two million, two point one million, stay real close to two million moving forward. We can do that, but things can get more expensive every year. Eventually, it'll be a fire truck that costs two million, and that's all you're going to do. It results in deferred maintenance, lower reinvestment, but we can, we can, we can do that. Or we can be more flexible. We can tie our annual capital investment to something real, perhaps a property value in growth or shrinking, if it's shrinking. But we can tie it to the equalized assessed value. This would allow us more flexibility to reinvest in our community infrastructure. Standing still is over time moving backwards. It's about what that community, you want to govern over and how you see the future of Two Rivers. Either path, we will continue the self-imposed debt cap that I think is very important. It's prudent. It's more strictly required by law, and we should keep that. So think about this slide as you hear from all the department heads next, and we're going to start going through the state of the departments for the next few slides. This is not a total comprehensive list. This is a preview of what is expected two, three, four years down the road. Also, keep in mind that we have a lot of infrastructure that is not going to be replaced. You gotta, you gotta go ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road. You're not getting the full picture. I would like to develop a twenty-year capital improvement plan. That's kind of what I'm used to seeing. That is a challenge. That's on my list of things to do. You can't afford not to know. And right now, there's a lot of not knowing because we're not looking twenty years down the road. Balance is key. Remember balance. And as we go through these slides, man, I think you're next. And it's your leisure. Please. Questions to consider? Is staying tied to two million dollars for ten-plus years the balance? Should we be more flexible as time goes by? It's all yours, man. Next slide. As Kyle stated, this is not an all-inclusive list of some of the things that I had presented. It is a smattering of needs. So the first three items are projects tied to this year's Eastside Land Service lateral project, and they are strictly asphalt streets, so we are proposing to resurface those as opposed to the project of Harbor Sixteenth and Emmett Street where we are looking at reconstruction. Resurfacing is literally just replacing the asphalt. Then we have our traditional sidewalk replacement, crosswalk replacements, curb ramp replacements, street crack filling, street flat work, which for the past couple of years has been budgeted up around a hundred and thirty-five million. Because we, we public work street section is doing a lot of work for contracts, we haven't been doing other miscellaneous work, so we reduced that, trying to show the capital savings there. We are a little bit out of an impasse. Our tool cat lease, our sidewalk, it's no renewable machine. The lease comes up January one, and we did get a quote for a new lease. The lease payment for the 2026 tool cat is twenty-four thousand dollars a year. The 2023 lease buyout is actually eighteen thousand and change plus a two-year extended warranty. Bring this up to twenty-one thousand. The hawk, crosswalk signals for Maritime Drive.
Pause indefinitely.
Is went up from forty thousand dollars to a hundred and five thousand dollars. So the forty thousand dollars was that RRFBs, the retainer rapid flash and beacons. That's what DOT originally told us we needed to install until we started asking how would we permit these? And they said, oh, no, RFPs will not be acceptable. You have to do the Hawk Systems and, well, the cost more than double. It's our additional equipment down the road. PDW has not asked for any large pieces of equipment besides the dump trucks from March of 2023 that we might get in December or January or February. We'll see. Those two trucks were a little over five hundred thousand, were there. Those trucks, I'll have more trucks in the future for a need. I have two leaf batteries for picking leaves. Those are, I have two that are layering, and we're holding together with intertwin and extra tin rivets and things of that nature. Eighty-five thousand dollars a piece. With the potential project to move forward at Riverside Park, School Street and River Place Streets will need to be looked at for reconstruction. So we're looking at one point six million dollars there. In 2026, we are looking at doing LSL lateral replacements up in the north central portion of the city, roughly twenty-third to thirtieth streets between the rivers. And then what we'll do is look at doing Washington Street reconstruction and Jefferson reconstruction in the 2027 time period. Our traffic control signal cabinets are twenty to twenty-five years old. The life expectancy of those control cabinets is fifteen years. So I just noticed today, we're re-reviewing the report TACCO did. The signals on Fourteenth and Madison are twenty-five years old. So the rough estimate that TACCO gave us to replace just the innards was about thirty-five thousand dollars. The signals themselves should be looked at for being replaced in the future as well, but I wanted to at least start getting placeholders in our capital program. Looking at replacing the motor and the grader, so you're looking at seven hundred plus thousand dollars there. Twenty twenty-eight, looking at doing a reconstruct of Jackson Street, twenty-third street, and again, sidewalk replacements. So Kyle has listed there a subtotal of about five point nine million. You take a look at some other projects that include there, come up four eight million easily. So the need is great. Obviously, the funds are not, and those are the tough decisions that we ultimately have to make. Yes, Darla, I saw your name. With that being said, the LSL contracts, we do get subsidized with the in our funding. We get some in our subsidy regarding the reconstructions, but that does not include the principal forgiveness that we would see for private site services and whatnot. So anyway, Darla.
On the sidewalk replacements, first of all, do we replace sidewalks or have the homeowner replace sidewalks if there's a complaint? Or are we going back to having the sidewalk program where you actively go out, take a chunk of the city and inspect the sidewalks?
Being proactive, I would love to be able to go through the city on a quadrant-by-quadrant basis. We have not done that in two years because of staffing rights. So, but for the sidewalks impacted by trees, we have a running list of those because street section is working on other funded projects. They have not gotten to the sidewalk replacement in our own use, so they'll probably get pushed another year.
Your sidewalk inventory, your backlog has probably gotten bigger every year you've been here?
Yes.
And curb?
Curb work, crosswalks. So, yes. Infrastructure, average age of our sanitary sewer system is probably around nineteen fifty-two, nineteen fifty-five, somewhere in there. So you're looking at seventy-five-plus-year-old pipe in the ground. Some of the clay pipe is, looks phenomenal, others does not. Streets, for the most part, I believe our average rating of our streets is above five, five point two, something like that on a one to 10 scale. One being, I basically have a very poor gravel road, a 10 is a branded street. So we're generally, when you're in ones, twos, and threes, will reconstruction is a, is pretty much the only option. Three, four, five, you're looking at resurfacing with a smattering of reconstruction in there. And then six through 10, six through eight, you're looking at more maintenance site, crack filling, small patches and things of that nature.
When is the last time this council, maybe not this council, maybe it was the previous council, when's the last time an emergency infrastructure repair was brought to council? when's the last time an emergency infrastructure repair was brought to council?
Brought the council?
Those are much more expensive than normal construction because best avoided at all costs. Prevented payments.
In the last one, in the last one, in the last month, we just had two. One being the, uh, storm sewer, single, uh, Jefferson Street, um, up around twenty-third. And then, um, thirty-fourth Street towards the dead end, West Dead End, uh, had a sanitary sewer that had a significant sag that was causing the basement backup.
I guess my point was these emergency repairs cost a lot more for quick mobilization.
But this is planning and resolution of the situation correctly.
So if we're trying to save money by underfunding our infrastructure, a lot of time that'll bite you in the butt because it's costing more. Something breaks and you gotta mobilize immediately for emergency repairs. Now you're paying double or whatever it would cost otherwise.
Yep.
Okay.
Who pays for the emergency?
Depends on which infrastructure. So sanitary wastewater would be paid for in storm. The one, the single on twenty, uh, Jefferson and twenty-third, um, that one we are trying to go after a fiber optic contractor that apparently, uh, directional board their conduit brings through our storm sewer. So that's what ultimately caused the slow to go down into the sewer system and create void.
New infrastructure fails to.
Oh, yeah.
It's in on Lake Oyster. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of that came steaming up last year. We need to do that next year.
Okay.
Um, since you stopped systematically inspecting sidewalks, have you also sewer pipe inspections?
Uh, primarily the sewer pipe that we are televising is for upcoming contracts, but nothing much beyond that.
No, no preventative, uh, inspection. Is that a staffing issue too, or?
That is a funding issue to, uh, get a contractor, uh, basically available funds to do more televising.
Okay.
Part of the rack. One thing I would mention about Matt's, uh, items of the sidewalks and trees especially. Uh, in my experience and learning from the forestry group in our inventory is that probably thirty to forty years ago, there was a big push of planting Norway maples in our terraces. Um, and not maintaining consistent, uh, policies on what size trees are going in and where. So we are stuck with a lot of very large trees in terraces that are likely too small or they are under utilities when they shouldn't be. Um, so last few years, we've tried to been very, very strict about planting the right sized trees in the right sized terraces, uh, that fixed some of those issues. Uh, but there are a lot of important issue maple trees, not just ash trees across the city that are just way too big for terraces that should, should never have been there. So try and get those corrected. Um, all right, so parts and rack for twenty twenty-six, uh, the Shota Beach concession stand. What we're working with right now is, uh, hopefully two hundred thousand dollars in city investment that might get a little better even, uh, depending on how we do my grant funding. But right now we're looking at, uh, going after at least two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in grants to, uh, make that concession stand restroom renovation take place. So the goal is not to go over four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that. Uh, we might totally go over that, but in terms of city, uh, investment, we would be well under that hopefully uh, by the time it's all said and done. Uh, Riverside Park renovations, skate park, uh, that is, uh, funded with the large Wisconsin DNR grant we have right now. We'd like to do some community fundraising as a part of the skate park phase two. I did notice on the sheets, um, Riverside skate, uh, Riverside Park skate park numbers have flip flopped. They're correct, so it should be one hundred thousand for the skate park and city investment. And looking at three hundred and seventy-five roughly in city fundraising, community fundraising and grants. So, um, just a quick fix on that one, but this should, this should be accurate. Putting the phase one and phase two for Riverside together. Uh, we typically try to, uh, update our armors, gators on a, a fairly frequent cycle. So the next, that's the next line. Uh, probably a little bit lower than, uh, what ideally we'd like in terms of, uh, equipment replacement. There are, we badly need a backhoe for the cemetery, uh, an aerial lift for forestry would be tremendous. We're, uh, a stump grinder, uh, but we didn't include those in this plan. Vietnam Park Shelter, uh, roof, so that is the concession stand and restroom building. We'd like to put a big roof on that. Uh, and then we have a grant out right now for fifty-five thousand dollars to put brand new lighting on one of the Little League fields, Little League softball fields. Uh, so that thirty thousand will help us get the roof and the match for that, uh, for the grant of that lighting at that field. Uh, community house, the roof needs new gutters. This is great news actually that it's just a gutter. We were thinking it was gonna need an entirely new roof over top of the gym. It does leak in big storms right now, but, uh, we've had a company out and given us a good idea of what to do with that now and just replacing gutters. Paddles park A D A launch, that's old, that, uh, that would actually take off. I'm not going to pursue that at this point because they've got, uh, grades going other directions instead of that. So that was a little out of date. Uh, playground repairs and maintenance. This is for when we fix, uh, things on playgrounds and we put mulch into playgrounds. Uh, playground parts are surprisingly expensive, so we typically do this every year to be able to replace parts. So the thing I'd like to start doing at most of our playgrounds is we badly need new benches and trash cans. They're being smashed, run of dates. Uh, the library would do this very well, but over at Lake Shore Park, those trash cans and benches are in very rough condition. So I'd start using some of that for those as well. Uh, then we move into twenty twenty-seven. Uh, where we found a lot of success so far is, uh, projects like Ashota Park, Riverside Park, uh, and Central Park to some extent. But when we've had, uh, strategic plans laid out, ready to go, this helped us go get grant funding and execute those projects, do a lot of components of those master plans. Uh, so going into this next year, I'm back, we would like to do a strategic plan for our youth sports facilities at Vietnam and Walsh Field. Uh, Walsh Field, I would love to see a better functioning restroom, be able to do a lot more better events out of there, fix the bleachers, reconfigure the backstops, uh, do a lot of good things there. The next one is kind of a placeholder and very much a guess in that based on conversations we've been having, uh, the city staff, uh, team has been having with Thermo Fisher is that there's a shot, maybe, I don't know the percentage of chance at this point, but there's a shot that we could be in possession of, uh, the Hamilton property for the next couple of years. And so I wanted to get a placeholder in here that Harborview Park and that riverfront area is very, very poor condition. We call, uh, and we'd like that to be green space at some point and a connector trail for Mariners Trail to Ashota Park. So I wanna start putting in placeholders for that. And just so we know that those seawall infrastructure components could be quite expensive at some point. Uh, now there are larger federal funds, uh, and the Daybreak Fund is another one. The fund for Lake Michigan, uh, US Mission Wildlife Service, there are some pretty major grant opportunities out there for those things, uh, as well as the interstate programs. But it's at least right now we're getting that held on there. Uh, the Xander Park a lot badly needs to be redone in the driveway. Uh, community house, Jeter Floor, it's time to get that replaced as well. The next one. Continuing twenty twenty-seven, still trying to replace some of our, uh, equipment or get us more capacity in forestry. So we rent, uh, equipment or use contractors for a lot of, uh, trees that we can't get up to without a lift. And we also rent, uh, rent a stump grinder as well. So we get, get that in-house hopefully in the long term and saves us money. Small project at the, uh, Central Park Fountain. Mariners Trail shoreline access, uh, we'd like to get improved walkways down to the beach because there's several stairways that are washed out of high water. Uh, for those of you that attended that three committee meeting we did with the grant funding we have going on right now, it's my ideas for kind of switch back halfway to get you down to the beach. Um, that one we're working on at Wisconsin Coastal Management, um, gray application right now. That program goes very, very slow, so I don't anticipate needing to borrow that money until going into twenty twenty-seven if we get that grant. Uh, Vietnam Purple Field, that's the quote we have for lighting. To get that lighting, that lighting is very, very old and needs to, uh, eventually get replaced. The next major playground project, the worst condition playground we have in terms of a major, uh, playground, there's probably very small playgrounds, uh, like that's Mark's playground. The major playground that's gonna need replaced within the next couple of years is Lake Shore Park. Is in pretty rough condition. It is rough conditions being out where it's located on Lake. Uh, then I have Washington Park restroom updates that appear at Washington Park is in pretty poor condition. Um, I have cemetery maintenance building on that. I'd like to expand, uh, the restroom facility and the shop facility there and the offices so that I can move our park maintenance supervisor onto the community house. All of our parks and maintenance seasonal would go to the cemetery instead of working out of the community house. Uh, but that takes a chunk of money to get that facility of, uh, of the stuff so that we can even house all those people and all that work. And then Taylor Park Playground is also on there. The other one that I can swap out Taylor Park or Betts Park, right? For around seventy-five thousand dollars, those are fairly small playgrounds, but they are, it's time for them as well. They might be nice fundraising opportunities eventually, so that's something too. So, yeah, uh, I think that's all of my stuff. Um, there is a tremendous lot of other things on here. We do have a lot of things encapsulated in big projects because Riverside Park has fallen so far behind at this point. If we're gonna make it a functional park that it's safe to be in and people wanna go there, it needs a full on reconfiguration. Walsh Field is getting old and needs some TLC. There's a few, there's definitely other projects all throughout the parks that we gotta keep up on, so. Yeah, I think it's all of them. I might have some twenty total guy moved on there, but.
There, there's a lot more coming out of my head. Who's next? I think you'd like it. This is artificially under insulated because we don't have any vehicles on this.
Yeah, so we went through the enterprise system with the vehicles. So I'm just about all along in that. I was, I think we have two K S D that will, whenever they reach that time period, those will be the ones to go, I think probably in the next two years. Um, that would be the shift commander truck and there's one other vehicle that are still left in the fleet that are not into enterprise with those fully gone enterprise. Uh, also I didn't have twenty twenty-six on here. Uh, if you look on your other sheets, the only thing that is still, uh, in mind for me for EPO is following here is the squad camera systems. But we had one fail and another one on its way out, so those are a need that is absolutely necessitated for this year. Um, and everything else was cut and or pushed forward. So looking ahead, speed trailers and speed signs, this is something that we get requested all the time. It may not seem like a big need, but it's definitely a big need from the community. Uh, the only ones that we've purchased in the last twenty years was in twenty twenty-one, we purchased one that primarily went out to Memorial Drive. We also had DPW make us some brackets so we can move it around in the other needed locations. So we could do the most with as little as we could. All those signs are typically about five thousand dollars, give or take, um, depending on the signs. Uh, sometimes you get a deal like we did at Forty-Fifth Street in twenty twenty-three when we purchased two of those for the school area out there. Um, we got a deal where it was like six thousand dollars for two of them with the solar panels. Since then, I'd asked for them in twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-six and those have all been denied or cut. Um, next would be department furniture flooring. So we do already have terrific answers in, um, the leftover vinyl that's been ages old. Most of the furniture and, and everything left to replace is still from the ninety-two era. Um, again, that was cut this year. It's been asked for, um, at least in some parts since two thousand nineteen. So all the, all the items we've replaced since two thousand nineteen's initial request, again, this is all nineteen ninety-two stuff, would be carpet that was done in the carpeted areas of the police department and the downstairs break room. That was during Kohmeyer's era in twenty twenty-two. And also, um, a metal, um, mail cabinet, basically. So mail drawers. And then in twenty twenty-three, some paint. Twenty twenty-four was the smart boards that I requested. Again, this year, um, we'll have nothing. We did find a donation from Bank First National, which helped us with several cubicles that were, uh, about five years old. So we've been doing our part to try to do things with the least possible. Uh, that being said, there's still quite a bit to, to renew and replace again from ninety-two. Tasers, I've mentioned before, um, to the P O C and to many of you that we try to get the most out of everything. That's something my predecessors did not do. Uh, but that being said, I don't know if I went out on that deal because again, these are out of support since twenty twenty-three, but we are getting our bang for our buck, I guess. Um, but when things are out of support, that creates that emergency replacement, uh, extra cost that panel is talking about. So those will need to be replaced, uh, by twenty twenty-seven. The remainder of the squad cameras, again, those are out of support since twenty twenty-two. Uh, hoping to get as much as I can out of those as well, looking to replace in twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Portable radios, so those were a twenty sixteen purchase. They've been out of support since twenty twenty-three. So again, we're on borrowed time on those. So it's just a matter of when we can replace them. I had it split out over twenty-eight, twenty-nine and thirty, replacing, um, a couple of banks of those. I purposely had mentioned to the P S E I'd ask for them this year because we were looking at even maybe a cheaper brand. Um, but man, it's a lot, tried out some of those cheaper brands and there's some kinks to work out. So it was suggested and I agree that we wait till somebody else tests out those kinks before we went to replace something really different brand. We get the front office, the detectives and the flooring upgrades. If you're not aware, on the other side of the building is our detective unit, same thing there. Um, there's plenty of, of upgrades needed. And some of those upgraded to be like cabinets and stuff that are over. We have seats and chairs that don't fully function, missing bolts, there missing levers. Um, and then like you said, terrific hazards in, in some of the flooring. Squad computer replacement, uh, those were purchased in two thousand nineteen. So as you can imagine, with any technology that is well overdue as well, um, hoping to get out to twenty twenty-eight with those. That's what we had envisioned and we've always been good at having our own C I P down in the police department. A voice logger system is basically the system that, uh, records all the phone lines throughout City Hall, including the lines that we use here and allows us to do some of these things. Uh, so that was purchased in two thousand nineteen as well. Uh, the most recent upgrade of that was twenty twenty-three, which gave us five years on top of that. So that would push us out to twenty twenty-eight, meaning that in twenty twenty-nine we would be through for a upgrade. The interview recording system itself will be ten years old at that time. And it's already, we're, we're having some flaws with that where we don't have real time viewable, uh, recording, which as you can imagine is not easy when you're doing the investigation. It's nice to have somebody in another room being able to watch what is taking place when you don't have a capability. That's real downfall. City Hall surveillance camera replacement, those were all placed in twenty nineteen. Those will be well overdue at that time. Um, and I will say that Kohmeyer saved the city a ton of money installing most of that equipment throughout this police department on his own, um, where if we don't have him, then we'd be contracting that out. So it would be more pricey than like, we had just a guru here that enjoyed doing that stuff and reached out and found deals on things. Duty gun replacement and optics. We last purchased our firearms, we received them in twenty twenty-two, they were twenty twenty-one. So those are usually have a workable service life of about eight years. It's not to say they don't last longer than that, um, but as you can imagine with the required training that we have with them and all the, all the ROMs that are fired through them, they wear out pretty easily. Um, usually the mags are the first things to go and we've worn out plenty of those. Um, the next would be slides and springs and things like that. And we do maintain them as best as possible. We have two in-house armors that take care of them. Um, it's just the nature of the use. And optics, we don't currently have, um, the newest technology optics that most departments have. We just have regular sight aids. Uh, body warm replacement on the cameras, that's the cameras that all the officers have on their chest. Those are good for five years and then they, they take you out of support and force you to do fire. So that being said, our last, uh, the last contract we had, we basically got cameras every two years. So the last installment of our new cameras would be in twenty twenty-seven, which means it would run out of twenty twenty-nine and those would be due in twenty thirty. And those are something we can't get wrong. We need, so I think that covers everything. Again, those are just the need. Again, those are just the needs of our department. Uh that's not even including all the other things that we clearly want. Uh there's plenty of those, but I just thought the needs were most important for meetings such as this. Questions? Thank you.
Okay, fires next?
Just got it expensive.
I do have a handout that I did give you as far as our CIP. It goes from two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-nine. I would just preface with you before you guys read that, that's just a draft on my part. I'm looking forward to things that, that needs. And it's about ninety-nine percent need, but there's a one percent want down there and I can discuss that as well. Uh just looking forward, what we've purchased so far and what we look into as capital improvement projects moving forward. The good thing about it is, um let's talk about the good. Um the fire truck that we're purchasing next year in CIP. The good thing about it is if we were to purchase it now, it'd be about one point two million dollars. There's a antitrust lawsuit right now against the fire truck companies for the cost of all the fire trucks. And how much the prices have risen over the years, so I don't see us getting any type of class action lawsuit rebate or anything on our fire truck. But uh I commend you for approving that fire, that fire truck three years ago because it's uh. As much as that, that number hurts, when you look at it, it's uh it did save us, save us some money. So when you look at going on our budget for two thousand twenty-six, we just have turnout gear, which we replace every year. We replace three sets of turnout gear that last approximately ten years. Each firefighter chromatic has two sets of turnout gear. The reason why they have two sets is they get their old expired set and then they have their new set. Because of every time they're in a environment that has carcinogens in it, there's a set thing that we do with the gear, we wash it and. And make sure that it's cleaned appropriately and during that time they need another set of turnout gear. So it doesn't take somebody out of service. Um and it's something that we're gonna be looking at more and more at, at the fire service because of. This last year, last year alone, we've had two members of the fire department develop cancer. So it's kind of, in fact, it's one of those, it's not if it's gonna happen, it's when it's gonna happen because uh. Between the fire service and even our law enforcement officers, we're around carcinogens all the time when we're dealing with those situations with firefighting. And looking back, uh I think I was pretty silly, I've been doing this for over thirty years and the amount of exposure I have. You can be cruel and not have a mask on or gloves on and whatnot, um I might pay for that in the future, so there's. And this is all, this is all fact. So you're seeing more and more and more firefighters, even like I said, police officers and other people that are involved in public service. Even our guys that work on the line crews, I think in the future we're gonna be looking at some type of cancer mitigation for uh Brian's staff as well when they respond. So it's a big deal.
So in terms of figure that you said in fire truck, we were now be one point.
About one point one, one point two million dollars.
I was kinda joking in the beginning when I said eventually a fire truck will be two million dollars and that's all we can do, but that's like nine or ten years away.
Yeah. Uh the fire chief from the city of Milwaukee, uh let me, he was coming earlier in the week because half his fleet needs to be replaced. And they have thirty-six fire stations and uh the budget for him is two million dollars. So he, he basically said I can buy one truck like that, so that's how much this equipment is, he's signaling, he's signaling, so. I digress, uh so we have the fire truck for next year. Uh the radios, I'm not, where it says to be announced, I'm not looking for any more money for radios for a while. Uh we were fortunate enough to get a grant to replace our dual-band radios, which cost around seventy-five hundred dollars apiece. So we were able, we were fortunate to get that grant to replace all our front radios. So I believe we'll be good for radios for, for a while. Uh we will need a base station radio, but I'm gonna try to grant for that. I would be asking for money for that unless the thing dies and I don't foresee that in the future, so. Get the radios. Uh station upgrades, when you look into two thousand twenty-seven, you had ten thousand dollars on there, we get a lot of work done. As far as when we do station upgrades, this last one for the fifteen thousand, we replaced carpet, bathroom. We did, we did our bathrooms and fixed a lot of stuff that was broken and leaking. And we did a lot of cancer mitigation stuff. Basically what that is, we need to rip up all the carpet in the station because any place we're walking, there's all carcinogens in that carpet and whatnot. We wanna make a clean environment for the guys and gals that work there and for when you guys come into the station, we don't want that stuff on there. So we've gone through and really, um it, it's worked out well for us. I mean, for the fifteen, fifteen thousand, I think we estimate that we saved around twenty thousand dollars by looking at deals and doing a lot of it ourself. And uh looking, like I said, ways that like, that says we try, between the departments, we're trying to do stuff in the most visibility and responsible way possible with that, so. Once again, turnout gear replacements, that will be constantly every other year for replacement. Uh the ambulance nine replacement, we replace our ambulances to every five years. Uh and it took type of one to bottom for ambulance nine and ambulance ten, I don't know how that happened, but. Our newest ambulance is brand new and we have ambulance six is six years old, ambulance twelve is eleven years old and in our oldest is seventeen years old. So we're just looking at the future either, and I know I talked to you guys all about remount versus buying new. I'm looking at both options and see what's gonna be the best for us. And that's why when I put in there, purchasing seventy-five thousand and then remounting later. Basically looking at the cost savings on doing it that way, buying the used ambulance, pulling the box off of it and just putting on another one. I'm really playing around with that to see what I can do for federal assistance money. I'm hopeful that I can get the money again just to buy the chassis, so we're pushing really hard for that, uh and. Pretty, uh pretty hopeful in the future that we can do that, but I just went to the, the two different ways I can do it. Otherwise, new ambulance is costing for the rough three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It is, it's ridiculous. Unless we buy new recital sprinter vans, ambulances and that just would not work for us. So as far as uh in the next five years were big purchases, really that's the biggest purchase we would have to have in the next five to six years. Defibrillators, so we see uh for the defibrillators, I have forty-four thousand and forty-five thousand. Uh for twenty-seven and twenty-eight and going into twenty-nine. Um the reason is we got a grant for over a hundred thousand dollars to replace our defibrillators. And these things are crazy expensive, they're the most expensive things we have on our ambulances. I think the last ones we bought, I think were around fifty thousand dollars apiece. I don't have the exact number in front of me, what is to replace these, but we, we applied for, got a grant for a hundred thousand dollars to take the month of that and. Through financing, they would allow us to do uh three payments of roughly forty-four thousand dollars. Paid for the rest of them. So that's something in the future coming up and I think that, that's a good deal. Uh I know it's a lot of money, but if we keep granting for ambulance jasses and for our monitors and whatnot and we get a big chunk of it, I think that's. Be fiscally as responsible as possible with that sort of city, but the whole cost. Uh the pole shed for storage and training, that's, that's a wish. I just tossed that, it's just something on there. That's something in the future to look at and that's, that's been in there for the last probably fifteen years since Scott Snyder was, was uh, was fire chief. And there's a lot of ideas that we threw out with that. We have it so we can have a training building in there as well as storage for us. We put it so PD can store stuff in there as well. Because between the PD and the fire department, even though we have a big apparatus bay, we're, we're running out of them. They definitely are running out of work here with the stuff, you know. It's something that we can talk about in the future and even look at grants options on that. And as far as the station, moving forward into around two thousand twenty-nine. The roof over the, over the apparatus bay that will need to be replaced at some portion of the time. It's looking pretty decent right now, so I didn't put in a, the budget to be replaced, I don't want to just replace it to replace it. Uh other things that should load on here is the CIP. Uh we awarded a grant for a climate event, a month or two ago we were awarded. So that's a grant for over a hundred thousand dollars to replace all of our climate event. Is the exhaust capturing system for all of our vehicles. Uh other things in the future we'll be looking at is our apparatus floor, like I said before, the base station. And pretty good station upgrades, but there'll be some in the future that we'll probably be looking at. And uh where it says power cots on there, power cots are our ambulance cots. Oldest one we have knows around seventeen years old, so at some point in time, we're gonna have to start replacing those. So any questions, comments, or concerns? I think we're twelve years old from any other fire truck purchases, so. Another fire chief, what will we be talking to about that?
And we should buy an ambulance, it's a lot cheaper.
I don't know what to tell you, it's uh, it uh, it lesson will uh determine a lot of things forward.
Okay.
And as I said before, if anyone wants to discuss any of this, it's not on the fire station, we can talk about it. Thank you so much.
Technology. This is not an exhaustive list either, but uh. Uh right now, we're looking at um PCs, the basically desktop PCs that we use throughout city government. Um we, it's, we've been doing this since I started here back in the late nineties. Where we always had uh PC replacements done all through a capital fund for technology. Because I think one of the concerns back then was that if it was left up to each department to purchase their own replacement PCs, it wouldn't get done. And they would start aging out and then we would have to try to keep supporting that. So we started this um. This pretty much is like an annual amount, pretty much we've been doing this uh for every year. Uh where we re- replace anywhere from ten to twelve PCs. Uh some computers were able to just upgrade a little bit, add some memory, do that kind of thing, so it kinda helps us keep that down. Uh the PC lifespan right now is around five, six years, uh depending on where they're being used. Uh we do tend to rotate those around too so that we can try to get as much life out of those as possible. Uh server replacement, used to be an annual thing, uh but we are not using as many physical servers anymore as we used to. Uh one of the reasons for that is we've gone to, to a lot of cloud-based applications. So they're being hosted by somebody else, so we don't have to manage that here. Most of what we use server, uh our server space for now is for internal cloud sharing. As well as, uh we still have some databases that we maintain internally. Uh so we are looking at needing to probably replace one next year, uh but probably not in twenty-seven. Then uh another one of the line items that we have is uh. It, I've got it up there, say it is firewall routers, but it's a, it comes up as a information systems improvement. And that is kind of a cover, that's kind of been a disabled thing as well where it catches, it's a catch-all for when we need to replace a firewall or a router or. A NAS or a backup appliance, that kind of thing. And it seems like there's usually something that comes up almost every year that needs to be, be done in that way, so. Um then you see again, PCs for twenty-seven, PCs again for twenty-eight. Um. Phone system replacement, uh we redid our phone system back, I believe in twenty fifteen-ish. Um the company that we went with was ShoreTel. And they have since been bought out by Mitel and Mitel will be discontinuing their support on our system. Uh well, it'll be end of life in twenty twenty-nine. Um this year, at the end of the year, they will no longer be pushing out any new updates. So we're, we're done with any more updates to the system. Uh they will still replace our platform equipment, which is not phones, we never did cover phones, we just replaced those. We need to, uh but our platform equipment, which is on the backend, will be uh. They will replace that up until then, believe the end of next year. Um the problem with that is that as time goes on, that equipment becomes less and less available because they're not really manufacturing it anymore. It's just existing equipment that's out there in the wild, so. Um the system has worked well for us, but again, we will be eventually having to look at replacing that. Uh I think we can get through another year with it, but this is what we're looking at in twenty-seven. That could look like either doing what we're still doing where everything is housed internally. Or we could maybe in a cloud-based system, which in that case may not be this, it may be an annual cost. Or maybe a hybrid of the both, where we need, still have internal equipment, but also have a cloud-based server system. So I'm still looking at all the options at this point. Cause I wanna try to keep our costs down as much as possible. Uh as well as have a system that functions well for our needs. Um the only other two things, and this is looking way out, is uh we just did our network switch upgrade in twenty twenty-three. And we anticipate usually around a seven-year lifespan on network switches, so we're looking at that in twenty thirty. And we did the wifi upgrade in twenty twenty-four. Uh we don't anticipate that we'll have to do that until twenty twenty-nine at those figures. So and that's, that's an estimate at this point, uh based on what we know today. But you know how it is with technology and inflation, things change pretty quickly. Any questions?
I have a question. I've been planning for wifi upgrades for the community house. Are your, is your wifi upgrade for city hall or everything?
Uh the white, we did that for everything, for all locations.
Oh, okay.
But you're looking at.
Trying to get public access.
You wanna get public access, yeah.
That's what I was, I've been looking at is public. Pretty in our band with the stuff, really have the stuff.
That's a discussion we can have too.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm putting it like CIP's.
I'm sure who's next.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. Um as far as twenty twenty-six goes, um I'm looking at about a hundred fifty thousand dollars for electric meters we're program. Uh purchasing about a thousand electric meters uh to the new system. Uh so that's gonna be the annual thing all the way through. Um our big ticket for twenty twenty-six, which should have been for twenty twenty-five, is a bucket truck at three hundred sixty thousand. Um another thing that's coming up is the electric meter test bench that the meter technician uses. As you take a meter out, you have to go over and verify that the accuracy is correct, um in case it's down the line. There's any questions from the customer, you have the data for it. Um also looking at some substation security cameras. Um once again, in twenty twenty-seven, more electric meters. Also looking at a new ware pulling trailer at fifty-five thousand. Um and meters and then in twenty twenty-eight, the smaller bucket truck, uh truck twenty-seven, which is uh. Bought back in twenty seventeen, uh it stood for one thirty-five. And then looking into twenty twenty-nine, um which would be our most recent large bucket truck, bucket truck that was purchased. Um that's the sixty footer, um that's probably gonna, the two hundred thousand was an estimate, it's probably gonna be more in the three hundred thousand dollar range. Um but uh you can see where that falls. A lot of the trucks traditionally used to be on a ten, ten-year replacement. Now the lead time is getting further and further, it's coming in around twelve to thirteen-year replacement, so we're getting, you know. Longer use life out of them, so. And the savings, the savings are being pushed out. Any questions on that? Any questions on that?
Just a thought out loud, like a hundred fifty K we plug in every year for electric meters. That obviously goes up every year. So.
It could, yeah.
Hundred fifty thousand dollars in twenty twenty nine.
Wanted to maybe become less than we would receive. Right now, we're getting low on meters per year.
The point I want counsel to leave here tonight and ponder over the next week is, as all these costs go up over time, perhaps our capital limits should also come up gradually over time. Next.
Brian, how, how long is a bucket truck supposed to last?
Well, traditionally, it used to be like, we, traditionally, we used to keep them for like around ten years. So now it's getting extended even further. Our digger trucks are fifteen years for primary use, we have two digger trucks. Once it gets to fifteen-year mark, we're going to become our backup truck, and that will stay for thirty. So then, once it hits thirty, then it'll just get swapped out. So as far as the water utility goes, next year, we need to work on the interior paint of the east tower. We are gonna, you two have to, if anyone's noticed, driving by the plant lately, the fascia around the plant's been in pretty rough shape for a while. Kind of keep putting it off, but next year, we do want to get that wrapped before all the wood and interior rates. Reconstruct at the reservoir, we don't have any choice on this, on this, the DNR mandate, there are some issues there with the overflow piping, which next year, that's going down for drain inspection, so we were able to get an extension from the DNR until that came down for a drain inspection, but we'll have to get it done next year. South tower, interior paint from our inspection this year, we know we're in a three to five-year range. We just gotta keep a close eye on it. Not exactly sure when that's gonna fall, but it's gonna be right in there. If everybody can remember back in two thousand seventeen, we had a sand issue in the intake coming from the lake into the waterway. That issue is never gonna go away. We keep tests, running tests at the plant to see at what point do we not feel comfortable with how much sand is in the pipe versus how much water we can get to the plant and out to the community, right? The more that blocks up, the less we can actually put out to the community. We hit this span of what we're not comfortable with, right? Make sure we can hit max flows on the really dry days in summer. We know from our testing, we're probably not gonna make it much longer. I would say that three to five-year range, five years is probably even pushing it out too far. We're gonna be right there on that.
Probably keeping you up at night, isn't it?
Yeah, a lot of things keep me up at night. That's a big one. The other issue we've been having with the intake, years and years ago, we used to run chlorine out to the intake to kill the zebra muscle. So we have basically kind of like mesh over the top of the intake, so fish and algae and big things can't get into pipe, right? We just want the water. That deteriorated so bad over time that we didn't have a zebra muscle issue, because it was all kind of gone and the water just flowed in, because there was nothing over the top. In two thousand seventeen, when we addressed the sand issue, we addressed the issue of our crib falling apart. We put a new one in, new grates on the top, got everything, all the big fish and seaweed out, which is great. Unfortunately, now we're back to the zebra muscle problem again, because now it's functioning correctly. More than likely, in the next three to five years, I don't think we're gonna have an option with the one chlorine back out to that crib, for the same reason we used to have it many years ago. So annually, we do new water main replacements at about eight hundred thousand dollars. I understand, like Adam said, you know, we do have new stuff that fails, we have middle-aged stuff that fails, we hold stuff that fails. The DNR kind of would like us to hold a one percent replacement every year, so that your infrastructure is not more than a hundred years old. We, some years, we live up to that expectation, some years, we don't. I would say normally, we're probably more like three-quarter to one percent. So we're close, eight hundred thousand dollars for a meeting would be an annual thing to try and hit that one percent. Obviously, in ten years from now, that'll be probably over a million. Another big issue we've been dealing with is lead service replacements that we've been talking about. Unfortunately, to get all the lead out in our ten-year mandate now, we're looking at about eight hundred grand a year for the next ten years to get the remaining lead out. Membrane replacements, we've done very well with the new membranes. Don't, I don't want to make this look bad, but our new membranes are amazing, especially with Lake Michigan. They're still not gonna last forever. We have been getting pretty much ten years out of those, which for Lake Michigan water is absolutely amazing. Most people are lucky to get three to five years out of them, so we're doing very good with the new membranes, but it still comes at a cost, you know, every two years, we're trying to wrap. We're gonna be looking at two hundred grand every two years to keep up on that. Shop construction, we, we have a very small shop, we are very limited on space. We store a lot of stuff in the whole Hyland building. Every little cranny that we have is rammed full, because we just don't have the space that we need. And at some point, we're gonna have to look at doing something different, because it's not gonna work with what we have so far. I put that at three to five years, that's probably been a, on our list for probably ten years already, we just keep kicking it down the road, because we don't have the money for it. Chlorine rebuild, that's gonna be in the next three to five years too. Just like everything, our chlorine re-room is hit end of life. And we just, we need to get some new tanks, some new pumps, some new plumbing. This is something we try to maintain, so we don't get hit with a big number like this. Unfortunately, I have purposely been putting this off, because I do believe that our chemical additions in the plant are gonna change over the next couple of years. And if we can free up space in a different area of the plant, I would like to fully redo our chlorine in a different area, so we can literally just switch from the old, from the old system to the new system. So we'll see how that goes. I got that on a three to five-year span as well. We, we can get a few more years out of that, but we're definitely gonna need to be looking into that in the next three to five years. So this is what I came up with, that I believe is above our normal maintenance, and we're really looking at. I know some of these are bigger ticket items, like the intake cleaning, the chlorine out to the intake crib. I mean, it's not something we do all the time, unfortunately, we've been kind of kicking some of that maintenance down the road as well.
You know, now for the water intake pipe cleaning, do you have to? How handy was it when they put that other pole, when they did that sand cleaning out with those divers that came?
Yep.
So how handy is it, they tap another hole for putting a different intake pipe, correct?
Yep.
Is that helpful?
Yes. Yep, so basically. Yeah, we will, every time they come to clean the intake, they're gonna, we're gonna use that. So it was pretty much crucial we installed it the first time. Now, most of the utilities that I talked to that have the issue that we have with intake blockage, most of the utilities do this on a routine maintenance, so they never run into an emergency pinch. Have you seen the news? Oshkosh ran into an emergency last winter, and they had to ram this through like right before Christmas, because they literally couldn't even get water to the pipe. We don't want to get that bad again, right? That's what we had the first time. Unfortunately, there's not really any training, right? Like we had this intake get blocked up for over a hundred years, the pipe couldn't get any water, we cleaned it, it went back to great. Now we're starting to go down. We don't really have great documentation on that though, right? I don't have a way to say, oh, we're, we're gonna have to do it in eight years or ten years. We do get the stuff inspected. Their recommendation to us was actually every three years, I basically told them, well, that wasn't gonna happen, we can't afford that. So we've been pushing that out as long as we can. You know, we, we don't know that fine line, I would say the ten-year mark is probably the best we're gonna do. It's probably gonna be an every ten-year ordeal for us. It probably should be an every five-year ordeal, but it's not really in the card. To try and be fiscally responsible and keep, you know, somewhat adequate rates for, for everybody in the community, it's just, it's very difficult, you know. We're like everybody else, we're, you know, buying cabinets off Facebook, stealing stuff from helping Carter remodel, you know, we're remodeling the lab ourselves to pinch any pennies we can. But unfortunately, this is all stuff, I, I can't control this with my guys. What about that?
How many wet ladders are left to replace? What do you think about?
After twenty twenty five's contract, which will go a little bit into next summer, we should be right around fourteen hundred, maybe thirteen hundred. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, it's more than half, way more than half.
Right, I mean, I also get it, though, I see all the samples that come back that we do, and with correct promotion control that we're gonna do it.
Yeah.
Most of it's actually been turning out pretty good, but that's the mandate we're in.
How many wet ladders can you do a year?
My use, we have one. I mean, we could do as big a contract as we want.
Like side ones.
We basically went, we've done a various amount every year. We started at trying to do about eighty every year, which was good. We got some bigger funding opportunities, so we went up to like three hundred one year. So we had about fifteen hundred left, and the mandate was ten years. So we basically said, let's try and do a hundred and fifty a year. And that's where we get about eight hundred thousand. So we're, right now, we're gonna try to do a hundred and fifty a year for ten years. Unless we get some really big funding opportunities, we would probably do a lot more, but. That's what's in the card right now.
So I'll preface this with, Leicester Company Catalogue has not been utilized capital funding since two thousand and five, when we did a fifty thousand dollar project on our online catalog. That catalog gave us access to five other libraries, to a total of five libraries in the year. So that was incredibly beneficial to the period, incredibly beneficial to the library. In the meantime, since that time, particularly between twenty twenty and twenty twenty four, the library did upgrades to the carpet, electricity, shelving, new front doors, drive-through windows. We got a new roof, a project with Parks and Rec, two story walks, one at Zandt Park, one at the library. That funding totals over five hundred thousand dollars, not on the tax roll. Not a penny of that hit, hit the city's tax roll. We've been incredibly frugal, we've been incredibly wise with how we spend our money. When I got here, it was always my intent that I use the money to the best possible advantage for the library. That the city generously sent my way. With that said, a lot needs improvement. For example, library window replacements, we cannot just simply recut the windows. What it is, is they're a very complex system that are held together by, almost, it's like an, almost a rubber, rubberized caulk insulation. Over time, that has shrunk, and we have air leaks, we have water leaks. Improve that, fix that, that goes a long way towards replacing the HVAC system further down the line. So that, estimating, the total estimation on this, the twenty-two windows, with eleven windows over the course of the next three years, that looks like about two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Last time we resurfaced the library parking lot was two thousand and nine, issuing definite signs of wear and tear, with potholes and so forth. Our garden irrigation system is twenty-eight years old, just like the rest of the library. We're quickly approaching thirty years, and as you can imagine, deterioration in, in the library is happening now at a rather rapid, rapid pace. We take great pride in the library, that we are the entrance to the city of two rivers, and that garden shows that, demonstrates that. I think the architecture works well with the gardens, and then it's complemented with water departments. I would call that a Spanish style architecture, which is kind of crazy for a water department, but it looks fantastic, in my opinion. And I think we take great pride, you know, in delivering, presenting our community to not only ourselves, but to visitors as well. Our community room AV equipment needs an upgrade, as you all know, you've experienced that in this, this AV material. It's not inexpensive, as Rick mentioned earlier. As Rick mentioned earlier, we are not on the computer cycle with the rest of the city. We take our, our budget, the money you guys give us within our budget, to purchase our technology at the library. And that comes to roughly seven to eight new computers on an annual basis. And that also includes, now we have to throw a server, and all the switches and everything else that typically isn't included with the rest of the city. So the HVAC system, we did a major upgrade of the HVAC system in twenty thirteen to the two to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That was a zero percent loan from WPPI, that was fantastic. We just finished paying that loan off about three years ago. Again, being wise about how we, where we get money, how we spend money. But that HVAC at the library has had nothing but issues since day one. It's been kind of a controversial piece to the library, to the new library, to nineteen ninety-seven. That really never has fully resolved itself. My proposal here is a bit aspirational, a complete overhaul, a complete replacement. And again, four hundred thousand dollars, Matt, we're in my, on that, probably not even close to what that, the reality of that cost would be. We, for years, been looking for expanding our parking, there is land just to the north west of the library, right from the apartment buildings, there is a vacant lot there. That would be perfect for library level parking. We never really have, it's always on my five-year plan, strategic plans, but really have not broken down. I've made contact with the apartments, the landowners, I think there are issues with that piece of property. That used to be a gas station or something, it's definitely got issues, that piece of property. It's, it becomes a safety issue when we have big programs like Tom Pease, like our World on the Move, where we had people parking all the way down to the bank, and having kids walking down the street to get to the library. Where overflow park, overflow parking would make that access safer and closer, and readily accessible. And then finally, that library auditorium expansion, the library was built in nineteen ninety-seven, with the caveat that you could, you could add on to the east side of the library. And this expansion, while it's totally aspirational, is something that would allow library staff, because currently, we currently take the area from the fireplace and turn that into a meeting space. That takes staff time, that takes staff energy, that takes wear and tear on the carpet that we just put in, that takes tables, that takes money. Some of it's obviously an auditorium expansion, but with the expansion, all of a sudden, we, we see we're fulfilling a need that we definitely identified, we have World on the Move here. When we could have that kind of, that kind of presence, that kind of exhibit come to the library from, on a national scale, that brings in people the, the way World on the Move did. That seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars really kind of sees a payoff at the end. And also, it allows us to take the current community room, dedicate that to new services, so that separates the. So that separates the, the, the kids, the workers, all of that from the rest of the library. So, uh, that's where we are with the library. Uh, I'll field any questions you may have. Okay, great.
Thank you, Chuck. Well, we already can't afford everything that we've gone through, but if you need a few more things, we also have to acquire the property across the street, and buy the old C N tracks, repurpose rail swing bridge, those are all fun things we can do in the future. We don't have the money to do those right now. Not to mention City Hall, nineteen ninety-two, lighting, carpet, furniture. We have no plans to replace any of that because we can't afford it. Um, last two items on the bottom, Cassie, if you could just say.
Sure.
Or briefly what those are again, with our couple of staff efficiencies.
Yeah, DocuWare is pretty much, uh, document software, uh, management and workflow, workflow automation. So the idea would be A P, and of course, we have the H R, and the easier ones to bring out, to get some of our documents to a digital format. Being able to get all those approval processes to do rather than shuffling the paper around the city. Saves staff time. They'd also be able to work out getting some of that stuff to automatically come into our own software, where right now, everything's hand entered. Same time, uh, well, storage space, uh, looking back at files, access to that and stuff. So, thank you. Any question?
All right, and I think that brings us back to this slide, which is kind of where we started it. So, welcome to government. I don't know why you decided to join city council or run. People can have different opinions on what the proper role of government is, but I like to think that government is here to plan ahead, think down the road, think farther down the road than most, and plan for it. We're not looking that far down the road here tonight. We can look five years, we can look ten years, we can put together a twenty and C I P. This is what I did in my previous, the numbers do get scary when you look that far ahead. We can't afford bold measures tonight, but I also don't think that you can afford not to know what's coming. But it's okay, it's not doomsday. We can manage the situation. We can, we can cut, we can defer, we can kick the can down the road. We, we can do that. Or we can be more flexible if we want to explore time, how much we invest every year, make it a flowing figure tied to our annual E A V, that goes up and down every year. I could be the city manager over either option. One option is much more difficult and will make people like me less, but I didn't have to come here to make friends. I was here to, to be the city manager. Uh, so you can deliver the kind of city that you envision the future to be. It comes down to the type of strategic direction council wants to see. There's no right or wrong answer to this. This is about your values, your vision, and how your long-term planning, of course, that you want to set to resolve in three decades to come. Status one, or status quo option is maintain the traditional two million dollar capital borrowing level. Uh, this ensures, guarantees our debt will stay low, but it will also guarantee diminished investment over time. Or it can be more flexible, uh, like I said, tying the, tying the, our property values. Next slide. This is what was done in two thousand and seven. I think it's time to re-promise, to promise this to your constituents. The Wisconsin limit, like I said earlier, is, you know, no more than five percent of our E A V. It's reasonable, it's prudent financial management, it's a good policy. But we know that public debt is essential to investing in quality of life. It is. We have to pay out debt to invest in our community. Uh, we have this voluntary self-imposed debt cap, fiscally conservative, but we're also hungry for investment. We are very hungry for investment to serve from all the departments and, and things that we need. Our self-imposed limit is sixty percent, like the state limit, we're three percent of our total E A V. At least fifty percent of our G O debt to be retired within ten years. That is our self-imposed debt, we're receiving that, we're at ninety-eight percent to be retired within a decade. And this is a two thousand and seven policy. I think, tell me if I'm wrong, but I think this council would like to keep this in place. I'm gonna bring this to the next agenda in a week. As a resolution to promise, to re-promise to the community, this two thousand and seven policy. It's a good, it's a good self-imposed debt cap. Are we all in agreement that that's a good self-imposed debt cap?
No.
You wanna, you wanna make it go away? Would you have to do other ideas of how you would structure it?
Well, not yet. I don't think I have enough time to think about it.
This is just a self-imposed debt cap that we are already operating on?
Look, it's obvious what you want us to do, but we, for myself, I need to have time to think about this.
No problem.
You, you just raised taxes. People are not happy about that. I don't see how you can pay for all this stuff everybody wants and everybody always wants, wants, wants. And, and I'm not really criti, I, I know I am, I'm kind of criticizing department heads, but it's not the way I mean it. I don't know.
We don't think you're criticizing staff.
That you, what?
We don't think you're criticizing department heads or staff. We think you're criticizing how much that would cost.
No, I am not criticizing the department heads for walking when we walk. I get that. I wa, I mean, I want stuff too. I, I, you know, wish I could go faster on every model in my house, but I can't. And yes, everything goes up in the future, but supposedly wages do too and things like that. So in some ways, you know, I'm. I'm not ready to vote against this.
Nobody is voting tonight. Um, everything goes up over time, absolutely true.
Well, what, what difference does it make that we're having more taxes coming? Doesn't that make a difference of some sort?
The city froze the property tax.
What?
This, this council decided not to raise property taxes. Last year, you kept property taxes flat from one year to the next.
Wait, I thought our property taxes just went up. What are you talking about?
Well, the property tax levy did not go up. The assessed values of the homes went up. The values of Two Rivers is rising, right? This right here is just our current self-imposed debt cap from two thousand and seven. This is what we currently operate under. I don't want to change that at all. I think it's a very good, very conservative policy in place. I think the action is, it's time to re-promise to promise with the city council from two thousand and seven, promise. The next slide is the new part of mine. This is nothing, this is the new part. This is what the proposal was linking our capital borrowing to something real, not an arbitrary rule. What is stronger? Council member Bittner, you want to China?
Yes. Yes, uh, I think what we're talking about here is, we have officially tried to keep the capital limit, uh, two million or less a year, and it has been effective with the control of our overall debt, but any of that. Can you hear me, Bonnie?
We can hear you.
Can you, okay, so I, I keep, I keep your teeth static out there. So, we have, we have reached the point where I don't think we can arbitrarily fix the number. I'd like to benchmark that number to the realistic value of our assessed value and let it slowly react that way, because we're limiting ourselves by having a limit of two million dollars when everything else is going up. It won't impact individually, it affects people because their assessed value will go up and down and taxes with no rate will apply, but I think we're hurting ourselves with this, a limit of two million dollars in capital limits, and that's capital.
Thank you, Mark. Yeah, Bonnie, we're not talking about raising taxes and the proposal is not to raise taxes. The proposal is to tie how much we borrow in capital to, to something real, to a benchmark. Let's index it to, to something in reality. My proposal was the E A V, because that changes annually. It's determined not by us, it's sort of determined by the department revenues of outside independent agency. We did it every February. When times are good and families are rising, that number will go up. During times of economic recession and contraction, that number will go down. That's what we will tighten our belt when the economy is contracting, things are going down.
That would still raise taxes. That would still raise taxes. Because you gotta pay for the extra debt that you're carrying over those, over the course of ten years, regardless if someone's house went up or not. I mean, your house going up in value is the seed. It only goes up if you sell it. If you don't sell it, it's not really an increase. If you hold on to it, just like a recession, you can have the same house that's valued at this today, ten years from now, that same house can be valued at much less, depending on the market. So, but, it, it's, it's a, I don't want to say it's a fake number, but it's kind of a fake number. I mean, just because your house value increased, your wages didn't. So it doesn't give the house owner more money to be able to pay these taxes. Because even if they sell their house, they gotta buy a new house on the same market, which is no new net gain for them.
Great. And, a, a, and what it does do, it makes the collection no rate applied to those assessed values. We should bring in more total revenue too, in terms of tax dollars. To move to another city and higher assessed value rate, you're gonna have that effect anyway. We're, we're not really changing, I, what we're looking at is the practice of limiting what we're doing to two million dollars. I don't know where that ever came from, but it isn't realistic as your city points and, and need changes.
We've been at the two million mark for about ten years. And over the, over that ten years, everything has gotten more expensive. So the idea that we can talk about over the next week and, or however long it takes is, you know, having to be a floating target that adjusts as capacity changes.
Is that target linked directly to the assessed value, right?
The idea is to link the capital borrowing directly to the assessed value. Yep, just like credit card companies do when your, when your limit, when your, when your salary goes up, and you get a higher credit limit from your credit card company. It's kind of the same concept as that. So I fear that without embracing that flexibility, we'll just keep falling slowly behind the curve, fall a little bit more each year. Um, you guys saw the numbers that are coming up. There wasn't too much fluff items on there, because all things had need to be done. For the most part, and we can't afford, we can't afford what's coming, and we're not, we're not even looking around the curve entirely with the ten year outlook.
If, and if I may add, those dreams and aspirations for the future, they will be individually true each year by our own budget. And we can look at that, and they're, they're not all gonna come at once. They'll be monitored by the city council book, or the city council poll, to improve the budget for that annual year. But just keeping a cap on our capital limit, uh, each year is kind of a, an artificial mandate if we have more need. It doesn't address the realities and thoughts that we are occurring.
We're quite literally falling behind the curve more and more each year, but we are saving money and keeping it down low while doing it. So that's kind of the state of the departments, where we are, um, and a look at the big picture. How I see it from my first one hundred days here, one hundred-ish. The hardest pill to swallow is seventy thousand dollars next year for engineering, for the parking deck, which is crumbling and deteriorating, connected to the building. And that is the last item on our agenda tonight. We want to gather our things up and help the works director can lead us on a tour of the underground. Seventy thousand dollars for engineering and a million dollars to do repairs or something, basically.
The, the million dollars placeholder, um, I, uh, back up a little bit, the, uh, before break, what we left, we asked them to take a look at fixing the concrete, over the, I'll call it the T D parking deck. Started looking at that, saw a weather guard, both possibly adding, uh, heated concrete slabs to prevent us from having to use, uh, salt, corroded salt and, uh, with the maintenance vehicles from, uh, going up there. Uh, we started looking at the structural plans of the parking deck and, uh, going down to the basement. And once we started looking at the structural components down in the basement, we realized there were structural issues. Uh, I reached out to three consultants that never returned a phone call. A fourth consultant actually came in, uh, took a look at the, uh, structure itself and wrote a mini report on it. Asked him if he wanted a estimate for, uh, putting together plans and specifications, so that we can not give it out for bid. Uh, and the cost estimate, uh, for the design work alone was seventy thousand dollars. That has been pushed off until this coming, uh, twenty twenty-six, uh, calendar year. And the anticipation is that construction work that take place in twenty twenty-seven, twenty-eight. So we're not looking at borrowing the, uh, construction funds. Once we have the, uh, plans and specifications, uh, hopefully at that time would give a, a better idea of what the actual construction cost is. The million dollars right now is a placeholder, and that's just for my year to consulting engineering, doing some reverse calculation and estimating what the construction values are. So, uh, this evening, I was looking at the concrete on the parking deck. Now, it is a precast slab, made of beams. Um, then there's a, a liner that is supposed to prevent water from infiltrating, uh, onto that concrete, uh, with the precast concrete with some, uh, some insulation, a little bit of gravel. Originally, it was, uh, paper bricks. Those paper bricks are removed and concrete was, uh, put into place, uh, about seven years ago. That concrete is anywhere from an inch and a half to, from a half inch thickness. That is why the concrete is failing. Wired beams failing, uh, sometime through the course of the last whatever years, that membrane has been punctured, allowing water, salt water to get onto these precast members, um, finding its way, cracking, um, and then ultimately, uh, your free spawn cycles are causing these, uh, beams to start cracking and more cracking further up is getting, uh, causing the recap, basically reinforcement to corrode and expand the ground. So, uh, I can show you these in a little more detail while we're in the basement, um. We're gonna wanna take the elevator over the stairs, uh, make sure that the elevator is fully empty.
Matt, I have a question. Matt?
Yes, Mark.
Given that the path of the parking range you're talking about outside of, how, how does it impact if that continues the road? Would that not jeopardize the handicap access to City Hall?
Right now, um, there is no structural urgency in that it's gonna be a catastrophic failure. However, um, the water will be wasted. The, uh, higher the cost, we're going to need to replace it and fix it. But, uh, ultimately, yes, it will be an impact to the physical basement structure, the upper parking deck, and as such, the immediate handicap access into the building, all of which would need to be figured out during the design process.
And, and that's mandatory. We have to have that entrance head, have approved, right?
We need to have, uh, ADA access into the building, um, unless somebody wants to carry people into them.
All right, thanks for bearing with us, Mark. We're gonna hang up and walk down to the basement now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good night.